He's our guy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It'll be Eagle Scout soon.
Yeah. Alderman Miller, would you give our application for?
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come and thank you first for this day. And then, Lord, we ask you, Lord, thank you for this opportunity you have given us. We pray, Lord, that whatever we do and undertake on tonight, we be pleading in our sight. Then, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for this county and this city and this country that you allow us to live in. And, Lord, continue, Lord, to bless our soldier wherever they might be. We just thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Can I have a motion on the agenda? Alderman Miller, I think you had some.
I'd like to amend the agenda and add executive session, contract, possible litigation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item five is to approve the docket of claim numbers listed on your agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item six is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor board of Alderman meeting of January 21st. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Now, item seven is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Item eight is the personnel docket. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item nine. Lee, would you come up with a special recognition for the employee of the month?
Absolutely. Jeff Nambley, Mayor. This is our second month doing this. We're still just as excited as we were in the first. This month, Mr. Willie Smith. Willie started working for the city of Hernando on August 16th, 2005. He's been working here for 19 years. And this August will be his 20th anniversary. So that's exciting. Willie's held almost every job there is at the public works department. He's ran the trash truck. We've provided that service to the community. He's run the brush truck and the street sweeper. He's also been the sanitation and grass supervisor. He's now the shop supervisor and manages the repairs and maintenance on all the public works vehicles and equipment. He's a true jack of all trades, and we haven't found anything that he can't get running or repaired. Not only can he do any type of mechanical work, but he can weld and run any type of equipment also. Willie's a great asset to the city of Hernando and the public works department. We're lucky to have him. Thank you, Willie.
Thank you, Willie. Willie, would you do the honor of letting us take our picture with you? All right. Item 10 is the approval to appoint Robin Ainsworth as election commissioner. Have a motion on that one?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 11. To continue with the end of year updates from the department heads, Chief Marshal Barry is gonna give us a brief update.
I was gonna give y'all a two-hour class on what we've done here, but I was instructed to make it about four minutes, and I think I can do it.
Good.
So, and I got new glasses, by the way, so this might be difficult. But first thing is our mission statement that he just shut off for me. There we go. Thank you, buddy. Oh, that is good. Mission statement, Hernando Fire and EMS is to protect life, property, and the environment through preparedness, prevention, education, and emergency response. We've got 53 personnel. We've got three divisions, the fire, EMS, and fire marshal's office. And we're in the process right now also hiring three more medics so that we can start our next ambulance. We've got 41 firefighters. We had a total of 1,680 calls last year. Nine were fires within the city limits, three fires in the county, 1,129 medical calls, 81 lift assist, and nine vehicle extrications. We've had 2,073 hours of training, and we've got four people representing Hernando on the Mississippi Task Force One group. Staffing on the emergency medical side, we've got 13 medics. Nine of them are single-role medics. Four of them are, they're medics and firefighters. We've got 14 EMT, emergency medical technicians. The total runs that the ambulances ran this year, or last year, I guess, is 2,621, which is about 218 calls a month. The largest month we had was July. It was 261 calls in that 31 days. 393 times we're at EMS zero, and that's where our ambulances were already working, and we got another call and had to call in help. So hopefully, our third ambulance that we're bringing in now is gonna lower that number tremendously. Our EMS call breakdown, so when they on the call, it's not like firemen where we can go put the fire out and come back to the station. They gotta go pick somebody up, figure it out, carry them all the way to the hospital. Sometimes they have to sit there forever before they get released. So some of their calls can last a long time. But 38% were less than an hour. 41.8%, which is mostly our average, that's what we normally get, and that was from one to one and a half hours. One and a half to three hours was 19.7% of the calls, and greater than three hours was .8%, which is tremendously better, because during COVID, that was the majority of our calls were over three hours. They've had 740 hours of continuing education. On our fire marshal's office, we got staffing with two inspectors. We got deputy fire marshal and then our inspector. They inspected 1,414 inspections. We found 1,489 violations, and 1,017 have been corrected. We've only got 472. That's really not a big number when we're talking about all the corrections that we do. Those are the very minor ones that are probably getting fixed. They're probably already fixed by now, anyway. Last year, we issued three burn permits. Out of those three, two of them were extended for another month of burning. We investigated nine fires. We've only had two major fires this year. One of them was the Hampton that was in February last year. And then we had this latest one on Tara Drive. When we investigated it, we figured out it was an arson. With our inspector Alex and the police department, they were able to investigate it, figure out it was arson, dig around and find out exactly who it was, and they've already prosecuted both of those people successfully. On our public relations, that's just a few lists, but places we go, but we pretty much go anywhere. If they call us, we're gonna be there. All these guys love talking to kids. They love going to Wesley Meadows. They love going to churches. So if y'all have anybody, y'all ever have anybody, just send them to us, because we make a list every month, and these guys love doing it, so we just let them keep doing it. And it's good to have them out there in the community, seeing everybody. And these are our latest accomplishments. We're the kickball champions of '24. And we built a 16-foot snowman, which was award-winning. So do y'all have any questions?
Chief, thank you to you and all of your team who protect us every day, and we appreciate everything you do. You're vital to the city, like our other departments, and we'll keep doing what we can to support you.
Well, thank you, guys, for your support, too.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 12. Austin, we'll look for your update on the past year in the planning department.
All right. Yes, sir. So similar to last year, I structured my presentation, kinda going through everything we do as a department, and a yearly update of what each item has entailed. So planning, building, historic preservation code enforcement, privileged tax license, which is our business licensure, MPO project updates, and our comprehensive plan update, which is ongoing. The planning commission met 12 times. They heard 63 items this year, and you can see the breakdown there. Most notably would be our 19 applications for subdivisions. Those are the final plats we've been seeing that you guys get to see after their recommendation. And I can't speak highly enough of our planning commission. I think they do a great job of vetting these applications of what we give to them and then ultimately bring to y'all. So they do a thankless job. It's a lot of long hours, so I really do appreciate all their efforts. Breaking down those 2024 applications, conditional use subdivisions, variances, rezonings, and a certificate of development. I went back, and just to give an idea, I know we all know we're growing, and we know we're busy, but historically, how much so? And so back since 2015, as a whole, development activity has almost tripled when you combine it all. So each of the applications in the graph at the bottom are the totals of each of those applications from 15 to now. And then the cumulative graph at the top is the total development activity. And so I know you guys see me a lot in these meetings, but that kind of helps quantify exactly what is going on and how. So it's very telling that, you know, just since 2015, even with interest rates like they are now, development activity is growing, and we are busy. Specifically, I know you guys, a lot of times you see me, I'm in a room full of packed people, and it's the least fun thing part of the agenda. But with three development approvals particularly, I wanted to highlight some of the public improvements that those have triggered. And so those three would be the Dogwood Hollow Sewer. That was a direct result of the Delta Landing approval and amendment, which I think, one, it got a better plan for the citizens of what was originally approved, and, two, provided for a direct need for sewer, Dogwood Hollow.
And by the way, I'll interrupt you just a second. The Dogwood Hollow Sewer project is completed. So they are on our sewer now.
So it's a great project. And the other two projects that are somewhat closely related. One would be, the star's a bit off on Get Well and By Hail Ya, but the dedication of the water treatment plant facility, and then the Madison Lakes Amendment that was approved, triggered the donation of the water tower site. And so those two projects particularly are gonna upgrade the water system on the east side of town to set us up for development for decades. So that's a major infrastructure improvement that were tied to those development approvals. So I wanted to highlight those. In the building department, we've kept Tony and Kristen very busy with the development approvals that have been, come through you guys. What that does is directly results to building permitting. And so this year, we did 3,171 total building permits, and that includes plumbing, mechanical, and everything. 144 residential homes, 14 new commercial buildings, 1,761 building inspections, and the receipt of about $1.1 million in fees through our department. And so similar to development activity, I went back to 2015, because I felt like we were running, just for the size of our department, and we were. And so, you know, in 15, about 1,400 building permits were issued by our department, and this past year was over 3,000. And so you can see the 2021 downturn that was attributed to interest rates rising, but even with that, the trend has continued upward. Especially to note, which I found interesting this year, was the way I ran my report was calendar year. And so we did January 1st to December 31st. And of our development activity, 85 homes, six commercial buildings, and 62% of our budgeted permit revenue for this fiscal year has come since October 1st. And so all of the activity that you see in that graph in 2024, roughly 60% of that's come since October. And so Delta Landing is active, and permitting is ongoing, but Winningham, Scott Meadows, Jefferson, everyone is still active in Hernando. And I think that's telling for our economy and for what we're building since community. So I think it's a reflection of what we're approving in this room. We've issued 30 applications for certificate of development, and what that is, is a new design review or a major modification to a commercial building. And then 67 use and occupancy permits were issued for either a new business going in existing space or a new business opening. Three highlights there that will be major players here very soon is the Bottoms Lost Pizza, their addition of their patio on the old DeSoto Times building. The Robinson and 51 approval that had really strict architecture requirements as required by y'all. That's the building in the middle that exactly matches what you've approved. And then the building on the top of the screen is the veterinary clinic that's done the major renovation of old Burke Realty space on Holly Springs Road. So pretty major facelifts from existing buildings, and there'll be some new building still to come. Historic preservation, we met five times. Eight items were considered, seven commercial and one residential. Our certified local government certification was approved. We are currently renovating, revising the bylaws, and those changes will be coming to you probably in the next 30 to 60 days, once we get it by them. And then we're working with Gia and Tiffany on organizing a walking tour within our city app that will kind of show you the historic resources that we have on file with archives and history and be directly related to the app in a walking tour, if you wanna tour the town and the historic districts. Here in the presentation, I'm gonna quickly go over a couple of projects that had some major facelifts and kind of shout out the developers and thank them for their investment in our town, because I know a lot of times it's a contentious relationship, but I think we're building that a little bit better. This is East Street by Tim Marsh, a major renovation to a commercial building that created a new sidewalk on East Street, a major facade upgrade, and then paving the parking lot and adding landscaping islands. So a major upgrade to East Street that we're thankful for. The 51 corridor, as you all know, has changed a lot with the roundabout. The Emerson Brothers have worked great with this in renovating their existing buildings, providing their streetscape. Landscaping and sidewalks are ongoing. They'll be soon to come to tie to this one, which is the Perry Plaza, immediately to the north of that. And so existing vacant lot, but what it will trigger with a public improvement is a sidewalk that will link Hill Street all the way to the roundabout at Oak Grove Road, which is previously impassable for pedestrians. So pretty important link there. The two sections of Memphis Street I'm gonna highlight are very different than they were a year ago. Butch Davis and Rhodes Thompson did a great job in the renovation of this parking lot in this building. It looks better, and most importantly, it's a whole lot safer. It's fully sprinkled, it's fire-alarmed, all the exits are fully accessible. So if you've ever been in the building previously versus now, you'll definitely notice a major change, and we're proud of that one. The south end of Memphis Street looks a lot different than a year ago. Hot Works Yoga is open. Lost Pizza is under construction, and as a whole, Colin McCrery has done a great job of renovating that building. It's a great part of downtown. The 45-degree angled parking, at first, we thought was gonna be a bit tight, but what we found out is it's highlighted that's a one-way street, and it's supposed to be like that. It's not supposed to feel like it's a two-way street. And so Colin's done a great job with that building, and it's ongoing with Lost Pizza. Water River, as you all know, of course, it occupies the vacant lot there at Commerce and Sloan's Way. But in my eyes, more importantly, we've got full pedestrian access around the entire corner now with the sidewalk and a streetscape with landscaping. So a great improvement to that corner. Recently completed O'Reilly's. It'll, I think everyone will notice in the spring when the landscape blooms in the islands and the parking lot, but that, the site's completely different than it was, not even six months ago. The less fun parts of the presentation, stormwater. We were audited by MDQ this year. We got off with good standing, which is great, but I think that's a big testament to our inspectors and keeping silt fences up and the ongoing sticker projects. We were in compliance with our FEMA NFIP, and so what that does is offer flood insurance discounts to our residents, because we are above and beyond board on the requirements for floodplains nationally. So all the three- and four-letter agencies are happy, which is a big part of our department. Code enforcement, thank y'all for letting us hire. Code enforcement officer Seth Benetti has recently started, is doing great for us. This past year, we did 398 cases with warning letters, which means it went the next step of just a door hanger. The second step of 199 began a court process. Thankfully, only two citations were a result of all that. So I think that's a good, good communication between our inspectors and the folks found out of compliance. We have one active demolition hearing that's still pending board action in about a month. 504 business licenses were renewed for $43,000 worth of privileged tax license receipt. And then the MPO projects, a little quick update of where we're at with all of those. The McInville Road overlay has moved at a lightning's pace. We've gone from activation to bid next Friday in the course of like six months, which is almost unheard of for these types of projects. And so big thanks to Wagner Engineering for keeping us in line with all of that. So we are set to go to bid construction 1st of April, completion by late July, so before the school opens. Nesbit Sidewalk, Stephen did a great job with Right Away. We completed maps and deeds, and so now we're gonna be in Right Away acquisition, hopefully, construction next year. And then Mount Pleasant Bike Lanes is in design with Civil Link Engineering, so we're waiting to get back the preliminary design on that one. Comprehensive Plan, thank y'all for letting me hire Orion. They've done a great job with the update as of now. Just briefly where we're at with it, we've completed phase one and phase two, which moves us to the community engagement piece of this. And so next month's planning commission, we're gonna roll out a public engagement where it's a physical exercise of the implementation of the plan to help it make it more real and easy to understand. After that, it'll be brought to y'all, and then we'll have online crowdsourcing for comment to try to make it a bit more manageable and get meaningful input. So we'll leave it out to the public just to see what they think. So that's the next step. We're hoping to be complete with the project by fall. And then briefly, I'll mention, we are still working through the building code update. We're working with the other planning directors to hopefully this year implement a uniform code throughout the cities and counties. Something we faced kind of a lot was contractors saying, well, I didn't have to do that in Olive Branch, or I do have to do something extra in Hernando. And so what we're gonna try to do is meet with the planning directors and all the code officials and come up with a unified adoption. So it's gonna be the same everywhere in DeSoto County. And so that should be in front of y'all in the next six months. So that's my brief presentation.
Y'all have any questions for Austin?
Great job.
A lot. Thank you.
All right, Austin, thank you and your team. We appreciate all you do. Item 13 is the end of the year update from dispatch director Deborah Rosenberg.
Forward, Mr. Mayor, Deborah Rosenberg for Hernando Dispatch. Thank you for letting me present the year in review. Wait a minute, I think I got the wrong remote. I got like the remote remote. We are staffed 24/7. Currently, we have 10 full-time employees. We have three computer positions that we have staffed a majority of the time. We are working on getting a fourth position implemented. We were recently approved by the 911 Board to have that fourth position put in place. Most of our calls, we've seen an increase in 911 calls, just a 5% increase. Non-emergency calls, which are administrative calls, after-hours calls and things like that, 25% increase, a great increase there. The total calls for service between this year, our fiscal year '24 and '23, a very small increase. Most of it was EMS-related. And we have greatly used our text to 911, more outgoing than ingoing, but we have been using that a lot more. We've received two text to 911 calls within the city, and it was kind of neat seeing how that worked. We were actually able to get a video call from a woman that was stranded on the expressway. She didn't know where she was, so we were able to get access to see specifically where she was at that time. 99% of our 911 calls are answered within 10 seconds or less. If you get a busy signal when you dial 911 in DeSoto County, there's a major problem. We have a redundancy built in place where if we get overwhelmed with calls, it rolls over to the county. The county gets overwhelmed, it rolls to South Haven. So it's just a big circle within the county. We're all on the same system, so somebody is always gonna answer 911. 90% of our calls have been resolved within an hour or less. The PD response time is less than two minutes on a majority of their calls, which is really good. Some of our successes that we've had this past year, we are in the process of adding a fourth console. I am trying to focus on the next three to five years for the growth within the city and looking to see what we may need and trying to slowly implement changes. The tornado sirens was one of my biggest things when I came in. I wanted to make sure that all of the tornado sirens were in working order. We only had one, which was on the water tower that had to be worked up a lot. It had to have a little bit of work done to it. And I implemented a standardized training program and quality assurance program, which will give the dispatchers more guided role when they're training new dispatchers coming in, so they're not just winging off the hip. Future, we're looking in the future. We want to modernize our dispatch center. The furniture that we have was donated to us by DeSoto County. It is over 30 years old. The tornado consoles, right now, we have one-way communication, so all we can do is send out a signal to the tornado sirens. We have no way of knowing if they're actually going off unless somebody says they're going off. I would like to get that updated so we can have two-way communication. That way, we have access to know if they're turning, if they're sounding, if there's a problem. We can let comm serve, who works on our sirens. We can let them know that there's an issue. We have started redundancy within dispatch in the server, the back part of it, the big money that you spend that you don't get to see a lot of. And we're upgrading our servers and trying to get a better redundancy based for dispatch, so you don't have any outages or anything like that, a better backup to our backup. And then I also would like to implement room for growth where we could add two more supervisors at some point, so we could have two supervisors per shift. That would be a bonus. And this is our comm center currently. That could be our comm center at some point. And then our mission statement, we want to bring calm in the midst of chaos and enhance the security for our citizens and emergency responders. Short, sweet, to the point.
Thank you. We appreciate all you do and all the improvements you've made since you've been here.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Please say thanks to your team for us.
Thank you.
All righty. Item fourteen is the approval to surplus the keyboard in the police department that has no value.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Um, item fifteen, uh, Austin, would you like to touch on that one? The approval to codify the municipal ordinance approved in two thousand nineteen, an amendment to require.
Yes, sir. So this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance that was approved in twenty nineteen, and basically what it says is, previously, you, if you had a corner lot, your fence had to come straight off your house to go straight back without a variance. What this amendment did was give homeowners allowance for an extra ten feet closer to the street, um, for a gate, so they didn't have to come for a variance every time. And so as long as you're at least ten feet from the right-of-way, you can extend a fence off the side of your home ten feet to allow for a gate. So it didn't make it into the municipal adoption, so that's what I'm asking for tonight.
Any questions on that item? If not, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. And item sixteen is in your department as well, the approval of a scribner's error on Delta Landing Phase One, subdivision final flat section thirty-one township two south, range seven west, plat book one fifty-three, page twenty-three to twenty-six.
Yes, sir. Um, so the closing attorney found something on the plat that he requested be changed. And so on the phase one residential plat, there are the townhomes that are on, against the creek and the greenway on the southern end of Delta Landing. The plat currently reads that, um, the proposed use of all lands in the subdivision is single-family dwellings and attached condominiums, and then he's requested to change that to attach single-family dwellings to reflect that they're gonna be sold individually rather than anything similar to an apartment complex. So it's, the townhomes are individual, single-family lots are just attached, and so he wanted to clarify that. And the reason for the language in the section township and range is that's what's chance for he requires for us to have on the board minutes before we can change the plat.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Uh, item seventeen is the approval to advertise for the EWP project of twenty-twenty-four on Deer Creek, Highway fifty-one Pebble Creek and By Hail Ya Road. Uh, we are still trying to acquire the last right-of-way that we need for the project, but we just wanna get permission to go ahead and advertise as soon as Neil Schaefer's ready.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, item eighteen is approval of a resolution supporting federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. Uh, we got this from the Municipal League, and I think they got it from the National League of Cities. As y'all know, the bonds we sold, uh, to finance the parks improvements were municipal bonds that are tax exempt. Um, that gave us a lower rate because they're tax-exempt bonds. So our citizens are paying a lower interest rate because of that. And, uh, there's just some worry that the federal government is gonna get rid of tax-exempt municipal bonds. So the idea would be just to have a resolution stating that they are good for cities and good for our city, and we would like to encourage everyone to leave them in place, because they're good for investors and good for low-interest rates for, uh, taxpayers. There's no discussion, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Um, chief, would you like to come up and briefly talk about the addition of a part-time position to the police department?
Uh, yes, sir. We were informed that we're gonna have a part-time officer who's gonna be out for a extended period of time, uh, in the near future. And he's a vital part of our court department. In order to not have to bring in a full-time officer to fill that position, we would like to add a part-time position, um, while he's out. And when he returns, um, we wouldn't do away with that position. We would just utilize that person in a court system, uh, better. Um, the way that, that court is now, we have some very large days. Um, if it's rainy, if it's wet, if it's super hot out, they, they take them to the Gale Center and stage them there, and then they work their way to court. Well, when they're there, we're responsible for them. So we have to have somebody there with them, and in order not to have somebody that's making a, a, a large salary on overtime watching them, we would like to have a, another part-time position there, um, to oversee that. It'd be twenty hours a week, no benefits or anything that the city would have to pay for upfront. It would cost us, uh, uniforms, and, uh, it will not affect this budget because we had, had some openings from October that we have not filled. So that money, it's, it's, it wouldn't affect our budget.
Any questions for the chief?
What do you think the total cost is?
Oh, lower on part-time?
Yeah. They make a little more per hour since they don't have insurance and stuff.
Uh, no, they make, it, again, it depends on their years of service, so it would be P-two, P-three, P-three, P-four.
That was twenty times whatever we.
Yeah. And a lot of times, they, we have one who works Tuesday and Wednesday. He does our fingerprints on Tuesdays and works court on Wednesdays, and the other two only work court. So they really don't really get twenty hours, uh, a week.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, chief. Can I have a motion on the utility adjustments?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, next, can I have a motion on a closed determination to go into executive session regarding potential litigation?
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, this meeting is now in closed session.